All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. With the count of 157 registered voters in the Abboten High School Gymnasium, the time being 7:22, I'd like to call to order at this time the special town meeting of May 22, 2017. The annual town meeting will begin after 7:30. Without hearing any objection, I'd like to waive the reading of the warrant and the constable's return, but for the record, the Abboten Selectmen have called this town meeting and issued their warrants. The warrants have been posted and notices have been delivered per the town bylaws for the special town meeting at 7 o'clock and the annual town meeting at honor after 7:30. I'd like to begin tonight's meeting with first a pledge of allegiance and tonight, I'd like to recognize and honor a distinguished member of our community who will lead us with the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to invite Ms. Nancy Reed to come forward to address the crowd with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Nancy, but don't go sit down just yet. Nancy, Nancy? Come on back up to the podium one brief second. I just want to take a minute to say a few words about Nancy. Nancy, as you may or may not know, is a graduate of Abboten High approximately 60 years ago.
Yep.
Nancy has been a lifetime volunteer for the United Church of Christ, including as one of the founders of the popular Chowder Suppers, which have continued for over 40 years. Before retirement, she worked for 10 years to help teach kindergarteners in our public schools and then served as an assistant librarian in our public library for 25 years. Throughout her life, she has donated her time and energy to many civic and community efforts. In the early 70s, she and her husband Kurt opened their home by creating their own haunted house each October to raise funds for local charities. Starting in 1973, she served for 13 years as the Board of Directors on the Abboten Citizens Scholarship Foundation to help Abboten students continue their education. She served as secretary and treasurer to Mount Vernon Cemetery Corporation for nearly 20 years, and during the 1980s, she was one of the most popular and omnipresent band moms, or Band-Aids, who supported the Abboten High School School Band and the music programs at every performance and competition. Nancy Reed has served on both the town's 75th Anniversary Committee and the 300th Anniversary Committee to organize events and parades for families to enjoy and to celebrate the history of our town. She is now a volunteer member of the Abboten Celebrates Committee, which is in the midst of planning local celebrations and activities for Founder's Weekend during June 9 through 11th, as well as future events in the fall and the winter. She's also helped to design the current Joseph and Kathleen Nisby Bandstand, which has hosted summer concerts here in Abboten since 2005. As the Chair of the Summer Concerts Committee, she's now promoting a 13th year of free summer concerts, which are enjoyed by hundreds of families from Abboten and surrounding communities. In many instances, without Nancy's devotion to her hometown and her willingness to volunteer countless hours of her labor and love, many of the above events and committees would just simply not have been as successful as they were. Many of us here tonight directly benefited from the events, from the efforts of Nancy Reed to make Abboten a better place and a special place to live and raise families. Please join me in publicly thanking Nancy Reed for her lifetime of dedication, kindness, and consideration for her fellow residents. Thank you. Thank you, dear. The rules of our meeting, welcome to the special town meeting of May 22, 2017. My name is Sean Riley and I am the Town Moderator. It's my responsibility to reside over and regulate the discussion of tonight's articles, which appear in the special town meeting warrant and later the annual town meeting warrant documents, which are made available to all residents prior to the meeting. The warrants are prepared and approved by the Board of Selectmen. Again, you should have already picked them up from the back of the hall. We'll be using those documents throughout tonight's meeting. For those of you who may be attending your first town meeting, thank you for taking the time to be in attendance to take part in your democracy. For those of you who regularly attend our town meetings, of course, we greatly appreciate your continued dedication to the well-being of our town. Tonight, we'll do our best to move the meeting along while also providing reasonable time to allow for open debate and answer your questions. We have a very brief special town meeting, which will then be followed by our annual town meeting. The special town meeting warrant contains five articles, so that meeting should be short, mainly housekeeping articles. The annual town meeting contains 12, sorry, 22 articles, including the proposed operating budget for the town of Abboten for all the services which will become effective as of July 1st upon your vote approval tonight. As you probably are aware, this will be the last annual town meeting to be held here in this Abboten High School building. Soon, about two weeks, the school will be celebrating the 54th graduating class to come out of this building, and soon, we'll be taking down this building to make room and to open up the brand-new building that sits behind this current Abboten High School. Please allow me to introduce the Town Clerk, Leanne Adams. And our Town Council tonight, sitting with our Town Manager, is Mr. Greg Corbo of Copelman and Page. Mrs. Adams will be serving as the Clerk of the town meeting and will be recording the wording of any motions and the results of your votes. Attorney Corbo will be available to answer any legal questions which may arise, and together with the Clerk, they will help me, the Moderator, try to run this meeting as smooth as possible. Seated at my right are members of the Abboten Finance Committee. The committee is comprised of residents who volunteer their time to review and analyze each article, which is to be voted upon at the town meeting. At the start of our annual town meeting, I'll ask the Chairperson of the Finance Committee to introduce each committee member, and he will also make some introductory comments to summarize the budget issues to be presented this evening. Excuse me, I have allergies. We ask that you abide by the following rules and guidelines during the town meeting. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and the Moderator will recognize you at the earliest available moment and will ask you to stand and speak, but please use a microphone either up front or in the middle aisle. Before you speak, please give your name and address so that Town Clerk can properly record the minutes of the meeting. Please make sure all comments and questions relevant to the subject matter of the article being discussed and do not make any personal attacks or bring any personalities into the debating of an issue. If the Moderator believes that the speaker is straying from the issues, I'll have to direct the speaker to limit his portion or her portion of the debate to the issue. We also ask that speakers limit their time at the microphone so that others will have an opportunity to speak and be heard. A motion to move the question will be taken up as any other motion. For those of you who are new to town meeting, a motion to move the question is a request to end all debate and to move directly to a vote on the article. To move the question, a person must be recognized by the Moderator, and the motion to move the question must then be immediately mentioned. You cannot take the microphone, recite your opinion about an article, and then try to shut off everyone else's debate by moving the question. Please also understand that the Moderator has the right to rule that a motion to move the question could be out of order. If I believe the motion is unfairly or prematurely limiting the voter's rights to hear answers to questions or understand an article or an amendment. Only registered voters are allowed to vote here at town meeting. Any non-resident or non-registered voter is required to sit in the bleachers sections over to my far left. The department heads will be sitting over here, and if you're sitting in that back-left corner, that means you will not be counted, you are not registered to vote. If you are registered to vote and like to be counted, I need you to shift this way or sit in one of the other seats. Excuse me. In accordance with our town charter, non-resident department heads and superintendents who work for our town are allowed to speak or answer questions if requested, and they may also sit and consult with their relevant committee or board tonight. Town meeting will strive to adjourn at a reasonable hour. If for any reason we don't finish our review and the voting of all the articles tonight, we will continue this meeting on Wednesday night, but we will do our best to finish tonight. In case we have to make any counts tonight, I have appointed Mr. John Warner, who will count all the votes in the bleachers to my left, Mr. Paul Malika, who will count all the votes in the section of the chairs to my left, in addition to anybody who's standing in the back that is a voter. Mr. Larry Keough will count all the votes in the section of chairs to my right and the Finance Committee, and Mr. Steve Wakeland will count all the voters in the bleachers to my right. I need to appoint a deputy moderator for this coming year, and I therefore ask that you vote for the appointment of Robert Kelly as our deputy moderator. So our first vote will be to approve Mr. Kelly. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. He just barely made it. Robert Kelly will be our deputy moderator. Understanding that many of you are babysitters here tonight, we ask that you turn your cell phone ringers down or off and take any telephone conversations out to the lobby so you don't disturb those seated around you. Understand, please understand that if you, in order to debate or discuss an item at tonight's meeting, the subject matter must be listed in the warrant in the form of an article. Tonight, the Finance Committee and others will be presenting their motions to either approve an article as it's printed, or to propose amended wording with updated information, or to oppose an article, which we call passing over an article. If you have any questions about procedure or how to do something, please feel free to ask me. We'll do our best to make sure that you understand that we're voting before you actually declare your votes. So, without anything else being said, we'll move right on to Article 1 of the special town meeting, which is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sum of money to pay unpaid bills for prior years, and the five bills are there listed, or to take any other action relative thereto. Moderator recognizes the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Matt Sala, who will make the motion on Article 1.
Good evening, everyone. The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 1 as printed in the warrant to transfer from the following sources to fund payment of the bills specified therein, from overlay surplus $1,500, from assessor's expense $10,000, from the unemployment fund $14,000, from the South Shore Regional VOTEC Assessment $7,500, from the Griffins Dairy Article $9,100, and from Veterans Agent Salaries $8,298.
So the Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 1, and Matt just listed off the sources of the money that's available. This is for, this is a payment of last year's bill or prior years. This requires a nine-tenths vote to approve to housekeeping, for housekeeping and cleaning and paying off these bills. If I, if it is not a unanimous vote, I will have to ask everyone to stand and count. Is there anything to be heard or any questions on Article 1 as motioned by the Finance Committee? If not, all those in favor approving Article 1 as motioned by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous, Article 1. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $200,000 from certified free cash to the stabilization fund or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves that this article be approved as is printed in the warrant. This is a yearly thing where we try, if at all possible, to put a percentage of our free cash back into the rainy day fund.
The stabilization fund or our rainy day fund or our savings account, is there anything, any questions to be heard on Article 2?
Sorry.
Do you want him to repeat what he said? Please do, Matt.
This, the Finance Committee moves to approve Article 2 as printed in the warrant. This is a yearly thing where if at all possible, we try to put a percentage of the free cash back into the rainy day fund, the stabilization fund.
So this will be depositing $200,000, $200 more into our stabilization fund. Are there any questions or anything to be heard on Article 2? If not, this is a majority vote to deposit money into the stabilization fund. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $40,000 from certified free cash to the OPEC fund or take any other action. And just to get the question out there, or the answer out there, OPEC is Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is health insurance for retired town employees. Matt?
The Finance Committee motions to approve Article 3 as printed in the warrant.
Motion to approve Article 3 as printed. Any questions on Article 3? If not, all those in favor of Article 3, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $363,943 from certified free cash to cover the FY 2017 snow and ice deficit and the sum of $74,320 from certified free cash to cover the FY 2015 deferred snow and ice deficit or to take any other action relative thereto. Matt?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 4 as printed in the warrant. This will pay off this year's snow and ice removal budget, as well as the final deferred payment from two years ago, record winter.
Horrible winter. So this pays all of our snow and ice deficits off. Any questions on Article 4? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 4 as motioned by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to supplement the appropriations made in the 2017 operating budget under Article 1 of the June 2016 annual town meeting, as recommended by the Town Manager, as listed below, or take any other action relative thereto. Matt?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 5 as printed in the warrant. This is, as was specified by the Town Moderator, a housekeeping budget of moving money from Articles where it was, where they did not need as much money, to Articles where there was more money needed, generally within the same department.
So it's basically just balancing a budget on nine items, and it shows where the money's coming to, coming from and going to. Is there any questions on Article 5? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 5 as presented, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. I would like, if there's anything else to be heard on the special town meeting, otherwise, I'd like to declare the special town meeting of May 22 to be adjourned as of 7:36 PM. And at this time, I would like to open the annual town meeting of May 22, 2017 at 7:36 PM. Before we start, the Moderator would like to recognize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, who will, who will present a list, excuse me, a moment of silence for a list of our deceased town employees, and also read a dedication. I'd like to recognize Selectman Chairman Ken Coyle.
This year's town report is dedicated to Robin B. Fernald. Robin faithfully served the town of Abboten, chairing its historical commission for 20 years, over 20 years. She headed the effort behind the inclusion of Island Grove Park on the National Register of Historic Places, was a member of the Tricentennial Committee, and was champion of preserving the historic character of the town.
If you could please rise for a moment of silence as Ken reads his list.
Thank you. In memoriam Vincent Griffin, Robin Fernald, Mary Donovan, Richard Murray, William Wegnani, Dorothy Damon. Thank you.
Again, for the record, just want to confirm that the warrant has been posted and delivered by the Board of Selectmen in accordance with the town bylaws, and has been certified as so by the Town Manager. We will now begin with the annual town meeting, which warrant, which has 22 articles. And before we get started on Article 1, which is basically the approval of the operating budget, I'd like to recognize the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Matt Sala, who will give us a quick summary and also introduce the volunteer members of our Finance Committee. Matt?
Good evening again, everyone. Just a quick summary on the Finance Committee. I'll start by introducing our members. The Finance Committee is, as the Town Moderator said, a volunteer committee. The people on it put in numerous hours throughout the year, and especially from around the start of the calendar year on, we put a lot of time in going over the budget, meeting with all of the departments. The people volunteering their time on the committee are Ms. Barbara Ray, Mike Platy, Lisa Bezanson, Katie Comas, Pete Walters, Liggy Suzadellis, and at the end is our wonderful Recording Secretary Deb Libby. And I couldn't, I couldn't see Cindy Whiting, who was there, in between Mike and Lisa, and one of our other members, Patrick Sean Tyler, was not able to join us tonight. This year, in, we have a budget that is similar to the budget that we've had in the last several years, but is in at least a little better shape. As, as most of you know, since the economic downturn in 2008, the town has been working to recover the budget, as the country and the economy is working to recover. The past several years, our budgets have been focused as being entirely on level services and providing the same services that were provided in the previous year. This year, it is mostly similar to that, but we were able to provide what has been one of our priorities for the past several years, but we were able to properly fund this year as a couple of additional police officers adding to the police force. That's the biggest addition to the budget. Outside of that, it is mostly level services.
Thank you, Matt. We'll move to Article 1, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds and appropriate from departmental receipts such sums as a necessary to free salaries and expenses of the town for the fiscal year 2018. All is set forth in the detailed budget handout or take any other action thereto. If you take the town meeting handout that you picked up and turn to what would be numbered in page 14, you will see the page that is entitled Complete Motion under Article 1, which gives you the details of the funding sources. Matt is not going to read this verbatim, he is going to refer to this in his motion, but everyone has a copy of it, and this has been online, available for the details. So Matt, if you could please make the motion for Article 1.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 1 as stated in the handout entitled Complete Motion under Article 1.
So Matt makes a motion to approve the budget under Article 1 as, as it is written in the complete motion under Article 1. The budget itself is on the following pages of your handout, which is a four-page spreadsheet. Tonight, as in prior town meetings, we'll be voting on the far-right-hand column, the FY 2018 Finance Committee Recommended Amount, which happens to also match the Town Manager's recommended amount. What we'll be doing, as we've done in the past, is I'm just going to ask if there's any questions on any items on the first page. If there are, we will address them. We will then move to the second page and the third page, and we'll take a vote to approve the budget. The items in Article 4 are additional information, but are not technically part of the budget. So, is there any question to begin with in the general mode of how we're going to handle it? Otherwise, does anybody have any questions with the part of the budget that is shown on the first page of the handout, which begins at the top with town meeting salaries and ends at the bottom with total ADA, or total with general government of $1,607,996? Any questions on that page? If not, please turn to the second page. The second page starts at the top with police salaries and ends at the bottom with the total of the highway and public works. The total budget this year, by the way, is still at the top right, $47,883,702. Any questions on any of the items listed in page 2 of the budget? If not, please turn to page 3. Page 3 on the top starts with the Board of Health salaries and ends in the bottom with total miscellaneous, and again, has the total in the bottom right of the, of the columns, total budget to be approved as motioned, is $47,883,702. Any questions on any of those items on page 3 of the budget? If not, if you could just turn to page 4, which has the information about the enterprise and what they call special revenue funds, which is, these are items where income comes from fees paid in form of water, sewer, golf fees, things like that. Any questions on any information on page 4? If not, I will assume it's because you watch loyally the Finance Committee meetings every week on TV and you know everything there is to know about the budget. We will just take a motion to approve the budget as presented by the Finance Committee in accordance with the wording of the handout, unless there's anything to be heard on the matter. If not, all those in favor of approving Article 1 as proposed and moved by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. Thank you. The Article 1 and the operating budget is hereby approved. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds a sum of $2,049 to the Town Clerk's salary line item for the fiscal year 2018, or to take any other action relative thereto. Matt?
The Finance Committee moves to raise and appropriate, appropriate the amount of $2,049 to approve this request to increase the salary of the Town Clerk by 3%.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 2. Because she's an elected position, she must, any changes to her pay have to be approved by town meeting. Lucky, Leanne. Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 2. Any questions or anything to be heard on Article 2? If not, all those in favor approving Article 2, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. It's unanimous. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds to the following capital items or to take any other action relative thereto. And you'll see the chart, which lists the department on the left, in the middle is the dollar amount, and then the funding source of how the items are being paid for. It's all from available funds. Are there any questions on any of the items in the capital planning chart? If not, Matt, you want to make a motion on Article 3?
The Finance Committee moves to approve the spending requests specified, and specified sources of funding as printed in, in the warrant under Article 3. The Finance Committee, each year debates a lot of the capital plan articles. There's always a debate as to what is and is not capital plan as opposed to operating budget. This year, the debate largely centered around what you see listed as textbooks in the school department, but is actually a new curriculum, and the Finance Committee moved very strongly, with almost unanimous support, to approve the capital items.
So Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 3 as presented in your warrant. Is there anything to be heard on Article 3? Otherwise, this will be a majority vote once again. All those in favor, oh, sorry, is there a question? Sure, if you want to go to the microphone, name and address, please. If you repeat that when you get to the microphone, say that one more time. And you might have to turn that on. Rick, if you could make sure that mic's on. There you go. Thank you.
Ventreska 905 Plymouth Street. I just had a question about the textbooks, the funding for the textbooks. It's for new curriculum. What do you mean by new curriculum?
So the, I know that members of both the school committee and the school department can, can speak to specific details, but the school with the new school building being built, had the curriculums change from year, from year to year that are, that are specified by the state to keep the educational records.
From one to what, though? Any specific curriculum you changed?
Generally, if I remember correctly, the school committee or the school department tends to update the curriculum around every five years or so. With the new school being built, they have held off for the last few years to be able to go into the new school with the new curriculum, knowing what they were going to do.
How would I find out what the new curriculum is?
Moderator would like to recognize Ms. Kathleen Bailey from the Abboten School Committee, standing to your right. She can answer that question, hopefully.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Bailey. I'm Chairman of the School Committee, and I live at 645 Washington Street. The school department has a five-year curriculum review plan. The past year was spent piling a number of different literacy programs. It's for the ELA program from K through 5. It really is not tied to the new school. It's a, an entirely new curriculum that meets the curriculum frameworks of the state. A lot of work, a lot of effort was put into testing, finding the correct program that meets what we are supposed to be teaching our students, and it is, has a lot of time, a lot of effort has gone into it. It's an ELA program. It includes textbooks, but there are other materials as well, so listening to these textbooks isn't quite the program. It is a curriculum program. It's not tied to the new school. If we were not opening the new building, we would still be looking at this program, this curriculum, because we are required to meet the curriculum frameworks, and we need the materials in order to bring the children along. And as a retired reading specialist, I don't think there's any other more important curriculum to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Anything else to be heard? Mr. Collins, state your name and address, please.
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. I noticed there's a line item in here for $35,000 to repair curbs along the town hall and library. Behind the Beaverbrook Elementary School, we have part of the playground cordoned off with orange snow fencing because it's broken, and so I'm hoping someone could give me an explanation as to why we're prioritizing fixing curbing versus fixing the playground that all our kids use on a daily basis.
Anyone want to take a shot at that? Perhaps someone from the, I can only ask the DPW if it's been brought to the attention. I know it's a concern. It would be brought to the capital plan, or now, we may be able to proceed with the Community Preservation Act for upgrades to our recreation areas. Was there, was there any discussion in the capital plan about the Beaverbrook Play, Beaverbrook Playground is what you asked, Rick? Beaverbrook Playground?
Yeah. I do not believe there was. That came to the attention of the Finance Committee, at least. Mr. Town Manager?
I am confident it will be on their list to address at the next town meeting or upcoming town meetings, or at the, at the Community Preservation Act. Peter?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dick Collo.
I can't speak to why the Beaverbrook Playground wasn't on the list, but I can speak to why the town office and library parking lots are on the list, and it's become a safety hazard. As people enter and leave the building, the concrete curbs that were put in 20 years ago, yes, 20 years, have broken down and they need to be, they need to be repaired and replaced. Ideally, we'd like to do the whole parking lot over. The construction parking that happened there over the last couple of years has taken it and it was already beat up, but beating it up more, but I think that's important for us to do. Again, I can't speak to the Beaverbrook side.
Mr. Collo is a member of the Library Board of Trustees. Mr. Schaefer, Superintendent of Schools, Peter Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Superintendent of Schools, Peter Schaefer. Just want to inform you that, as Mr. Collins had noted, that, that area is of a concern. It should be repaired in the next month or so at the Beaverbrook Elementary School.
Is that by the school department?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Anything else, any other questions on Article 3? If not, the vote will be to approve Article 3 as proposed, as motioned by the Finance Committee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article 4, Article 4 is to see if the town will vote pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as most recently amended, to establish revolving funds as set forth below, and we'll also be establishing a new bylaw entitled revolving And we also will be establishing a new bylaw entitled revolving funds, to establish these various revolving funds, and to specify the departmental receipts. So you'll see the chart that's available. We do this every year, but there's a new law that allows towns to now incorporate this into your town bylaws. So instead of doing this every year, tonight, as I understand this, we'll be voting to set this chart to be part of our general bylaws. And this will now, will not have to be revoted every year unless we want to amend it. And the actual wording of the existing bylaw is shown right at the bottom, right after the chart. It is going to be numbered in Section 59-5, you can see. I do understand there's three typographical amendments that will be part of the motion from the Finance Committee. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve the revolving fund bylaw, and to establish the revolving funds of the town as printed in the warrant with the following amendments. Title in the far-right column, delete FY18. Box K, Building Department Fund 041, Building Inspector, add, quote, "65% of," in front of permit fees collected from building, wiring, plumbing, gas, and zoning permits. In the second line of the paragraph under the chart, change the word "annual" to "spending" so that it reads expenditures from each revolving fund shall be subject to the spending limit established by town meeting, and to any additional limitations as otherwise set forth in the General Laws, Chapter 44 S 53E and One Half.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. So just to repeat, the three changes are, at the top-right corner of the chart, where it says FY18 limit, we're just crossing out FY18 and leaving the word "limit," because we're setting the limit for this coming year and for future years, not just FY18, unless it's amended in the future by another town meeting. So that's the first change. The second change, as he stated, was in Row K, under Building Department, third column, or sorry, fourth column, where it says permit fees collected from the building, wiring, and plumbing. It'll be 65% of permit fees collecting, and that's how it currently reads. And the third change would be in the text of the bylaw itself, because this is now going to be a limitation moving forward, we're crossing the word out, the word "annual" out, and replacing the word "spending." So it will say expenditures from each revolving fund shall be subject to the spending limitation established by town meeting, and so on. Any questions on any of those three amendments that are proposed? That is, the motion, actually, we'll be voting on. Any other questions on Article Four? If not, we'll vote to approve the article as moved by the Finance Committee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It passes as presented by the Finance Committee. Unanimous vote. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds in a sum of $14,000 for student transportation services to Abington students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-resident students for the 2017-18 school year. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to raise and appropriate $14,000 to approve this request.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article Five. We see this article every year. Is there anything to be heard on Article Five? If not, all those in favor of Article Five, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to adopt the report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2018 community preservation budget, and to appropriate or reserve for later appropriation monies from the community preservation fund estimated annual revenues. For the annual expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, reserve allocations required for the specific projects as presented, for all other necessary and proper expenses for the fiscal year, to take any other action relative thereto by the Community Preservation Committee. And you'll see there's information in the article which lists what is being proposed. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee as printed in the warrant, and to appropriate $219,957.39 from anticipated community preservation receipts to meet this recommendation with one amendment. Change the third bullet, as reads, to read as follows. Historic resources, American Legion, American Legion building, appropriation for repairs to structure, $22,000.
So we're striking everything in the parentheses also. We're not setting up a preservation restriction because Town Council has informed this is not necessary. So the Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article Six as amended and presented. And as you can see, out of the estimated $360,927 of revenue, the committee is proposing $219,000 in expenditures. The balance that remains will be carried forward to the next year. Is there anything to be heard, or any questions on Article Six? Yes, ma'am.
Catherine Salem, 22 Lantern Lane. I just have a question on the playgrounds. If there were a way to raise funds outside of appropriations, would that still be permitted, or is it now restricted that we have to go this route?
Could you say that again?
If there was a way to raise funds...
Privately, you mean?
Yes. Outside of the appropriations, can we allocate them towards that kind of a project, or are we now restricted with this motion?
I won't answer. Oh, I know the answer, but I can't answer the question. Let me ask Mr. Malika from the, well, actually, Rick, do you want to answer the question first, and then we'll ask the chairman of the Community Preservation Act Committee to review. I think she's just asking, will this prevent us from using private funds to do other work with other playgrounds?
Or even the ones that are listed here?
Right. Or these playgrounds themselves.
No, the Board of Selectmen can establish a gift account to complement the funds raised by the CPC. Town Council is nodding his head, confirming what I'm saying.
So the answer is no, it won't prevent you from having private fundraisers.
Right. So you can write a check any moment, and we'll take it.
I wasn't personally, but I know that the Abington Lions Club was looking at possibly helping to adopt one of the playgrounds, so I just wasn't sure if we would be restricted in doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions to be heard on the Community Preservation Committee in this article? Do you really want to talk? I like to, this being the first year of this article in the Community Preservation Committee, I would like to recognize Mr. Paul Malika and his committee.
Thank you. Let me just, I'll give it, I'll take four minutes and give you everybody an update as to what community preservation is. The town meeting a year ago approved this, and it was approved by the, in a town election. The Community Preservation Committee consists of nine members, five appointed from, standing committee members from planning, conservation, historic preservation, park and rec, housing, and four at-large members. And the committee has done a lot of work since the first of the year. Special thanks to Leanne Adams, Dory Jamison, Sue Mokun, Rick LaFawn, and special thanks to Jack Buckley, who had the insight and the stamina to keep presenting this to finally get approved. Each year, from your tax revenues, monies are collected, and the state will match in the fall of this year, this year's match will be about almost 21%, a little bit less than 21%, which is about $60,000. And from the yearly budget that we have, 10% is mandated to go toward housing, 10% for open space or recreation, 10% for historic, 5% for administration, which includes professional help for the committee, appraisals, newspaper ads, consultants, legal, and paid for administrative assistant. And who is Kelly Johnson, who does a great job for us. And then 65% goes into a flexible account that we can decide what to do. In terms of the process, anybody, committee members can come to the, to our monthly meetings and request monies for different projects, have to meet the eligibility requirements. The Community Preservation Board makes votes to approve or reject it. If it gets approved, it comes to the town committee for approval. If it gets denied, then it stops right there. So this is the first time, and I think if you've been a town meeting member for probably 20, 25 years, very little things get done that need to get done, because otherwise we'd go into an override. So as you'll see, the projects that we have, as mentioned in the warrant, are really things that probably should be done, had been done for a long time, and now we'll start to see some progress getting made relative to different things that need to get done. And we are in the process of trying to establish priorities in terms of what needs to get done. So anybody who thinks they have a legitimate need or requests for things, come to our meetings, and we're starting to put a priority list together of what needs to get done first, et cetera, et cetera. So, unless anybody has any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Malika. Where is any citizen or committee who has an idea for the Community Preservation Act for recreation, open space, historic preservation, or affordable housing, senior housing, to approach the committee? Moderator, I'd like to recognize...
Scott Tomlin, 60 Jennings Drive. Knowing that the track is beyond its sort of like life already, would the Community Preservation Act be able to resurface that? Is that part of the funding? Because obviously, it didn't make it with the new high schools, but that thing was put in when my daughter was a freshman. She's a seventh-grade English teacher here in town now, so...
Mr. Malika?
Just wondering.
That's a great question, and the answer is, we will be looking at that for the, in the next round. I think the, we've met with representative from Riley Field in terms of replacing the track. I think the useful life is gone, and it needs to be replaced. So yes, that would be something that the CPC would be looking to discuss and make a decision on going forward at some point.
Thank you. If there are not any other questions, we'll move to a vote on this article. Anything else to be heard? So the motion will be to approve the motion of the Finance Committee with the amended language. All those in favor of approving Article Six as motioned by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to declare surplus, the property set forth in Attachment B, surplus property, take any other action relative thereto. Again, I direct your attention to the annual town meeting warrant handout, and if you turn to the very last piece of paper in your stapled packet, there is a two-sided list of the surplus property, which would be the subject of this vote this evening. Moderator would recognize the Finance Committee Chairman, Mr. Sala.
The Finance, sorry. The Finance Committee moves to declare as surplus the properties set forth in Attachment B, surplus properties, and to transfer the care, custody, and control of said properties from the board or officer currently having care, custody, and control for the purposes which said parcels are currently held, to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes and purposes of conveyance.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. This would require a two-thirds vote. I'd like to recognize the Town Manager, Mr. Rick LaFawn, to give a little summary of what this article does and doesn't do.
Yes. In 2016, the Board of Selectmen established a surplus land committee that picked up the work from a prior committee of the same name. The committee worked for over a year and recommended to the board that the properties contained on the Attachment B be declared surplus. The impact of this vote would be to transfer the listed parcels from their respective current designated use and custodians to the custody of the Board of Selectmen. Final disposition of any particular parcel or parcels would ultimately take yet another vote of the town meeting. So this vote tonight is but one step in the process of getting some, or perhaps all of these properties back as taxable parcels. And as some of you may be aware, the board has already established designated separate committees to study the reuse of the school buildings that will become surplus once this facility, the new facility is open. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaFawn. So nothing is being sold here tonight, we're just basically putting it under the care and control of the Selectmen. Yes, the lady in the white blouse. It's my mother.
My concern is the center school.
Please state your name and address, ma'am.
My name is Ian Riley. I'm at 262 Adams Street, Apartment Two. I see where the center school is on here. We have to make sure that we separate that property, though, to make sure that Murphy Field is not one of the surplus lands. That's my only concern.
Right. And as Ms. LaFawn mentioned, there is a special committee the Selectmen has set up to look at specifically the center school and north school as to what the town would like to do with that in the future, if anything. Hold them completely, or sell them, or sell part of them, as you mentioned. So that will be a separate vote at another town meeting. This town meeting is not, by this vote, we are not authorizing the sale of any of these. We are simply transferring the custody control to the Selectmen. Some of these parcels may be under, currently under the school board or the Conservation Commission, to be moved over to the Selectmen control, and they'll determine it and bring back suggestions later. Anything else to be heard on this article? Article Seven? If not, again, it's a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of approving Article Seven as presented and motioned by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to accept provisions of General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5K, authorizing the Board of Selectmen to establish a senior citizen property tax work-off abatement program to allow persons over the age of 60 to volunteer to provide services to the town in exchange for which the town should provide a reduction of the person's tax obligations to a maximum of $600... Excuse me. When the total dollar limit for the program shall not exceed $18,000. Such new program to replace the existing senior tax rebate program, which allowed for a $500 property tax credit, or to take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Eight as printed in the warrant. This is a tax credit program, and recent law changes have made that tax credit taxable as income. So we are changing it to up the amount so that that will not be a burden to any of the seniors on the program.
Is there anything to be heard on the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article Eight? If not, yes, please. Go and approach the microphone. Your name and address, please.
Jennifer DeSutter, 729 Washington. Can I get a little more clarity, please, on why this reads more like, we used to give the elders money, but now they have to work for it? I just don't understand the language.
The change in this is simply the amount that they are able to get is a change from 500 to 600 to account for the taxable, it being considered taxable.
So they worked as a volunteer before for that $500?
Yes, that's...
So that's not the change? It's the amount?
It's the amount that's changing to cover any tax that they would have to pay on that.
Understood on the abatement. I just wasn't, I'm new, so I just wanted to be sure we weren't asking them to work for it, in a way that was new.
They're already working for it, we're just paying them a little bit more money.
Yep.
But they're getting taxed on it now, too, so it almost works out. Anything else to be heard? Any other questions? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion for Article Eight, to approve Article Eight, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, and or eminent domain for open space purchases for the purpose of conveyance, and for the purpose of confirming the town's title thereto, a possibly unlocated in Chestnut Street containing 45 acres, more or less, and showing a map 50 as possible 43, and being a portion of the property described in a deed recorded of the Plum County Registry deeds in Book 45669, Page 36, had possibly conveyed through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts pursuant to a vote taken in Article 13 in the June 6, 2016 annual town meeting, or to take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Nine as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. I'm going to ask if Town Managers briefly state the purpose of this article, confirming a prior vote of a prior town meeting.
Yes. This was, the property owners intended to sign the deed to give this to the town in lieu of foreclosure, for payment of, for non-payment of taxes, but due to titled effects, this article was recommended by town council purely for conformatory purposes to allow the transaction to proceed.
Is there anything to be heard on Article Nine? This will be a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of approving Article Nine as presented, moved by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to create a health insurance trust fund or take any other action relative thereto.
The Finance Committee moves to create a health insurance trust fund pursuant to GL Chapter 32B, Section 3A, to be used to pay incurred and unpaid claims and other related liabilities. As most of you probably know, last year, the town left the Mayflower Collective for health insurance. This is setting up a fund where the town and employee contributions to health insurance will go into that fund, and bills will be paid out of it. It's merely a banking issue.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article Ten as stated. Is there any questions on Article Ten? If not, all those in favor of Article Ten as moved by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds as follows, to the health imperatives, violence, intervention, and prevention, or VIP programs formerly called a new day. A request for $5,000 from the town of Abington for services provided to survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence for the fiscal year 2018, or to take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to raise and appropriate $5,000 to approve the request set forth in Article Eleven of the... set forth in Article Eleven of the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to raise and appropriate the $5,000 and to approve Article Eleven. Is there anything to be heard on Article Eleven? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Eleven as moved by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. It is unanimous. For Article Twelve, I'm going to step down and have the Deputy Moderator come up. While he is coming up, I'd like to make a quick announcement. Memorial Day observances will be coming up this, a week from today, on Monday, May twenty-ninth, beginning at seven thirty a.m. There'll be a ceremony at Laidler Field, which is on Chestnut Street, West Abington, at seven thirty a.m. At seven forty-five a.m., there'll be a ceremony at the Sergeant Richard Fitz Memorial. At eight a.m., there'll be a ceremony at the West Abington Cemetery, and at eight forty-five a.m., there'll be a cemetery in the, I'm sorry, ceremony in the Island Grove Bridge, which is the Soldiers and Sailors Civil War Memorial Arch. At ten a.m., Memorial Day Parade in Abington will start off from the Bieber Brook Elementary School, and will turn and go by the Legion Building, the Frohill Building, bearing a right on Adams Street, into Pearl Street, and then will enter into the Mount Vernon Cemetery, where there'll be some brief ceremonies at the Veterans Lot and the Grand Army of the Republic mound. We urge you all to attend the parade, and if you're nearby for the ceremonies previous to the parade, the parade will step off at ten a.m. Also, this year, we'll have a special ceremony at approximately eleven thirty a.m. in North Abington Center, right near Bemis Drug, where the intersection of North Avenue and Brighton Street will be renamed and dedicated as the Sergeant Daniel Vassilian Square at approximately eleven thirty a.m. on Memorial Day. We urge you and hope that you'll be there to also support the Vassilian family and that dedication. One other item for Memorial Day which is unrelated to the ceremonies, for those of you who have known longtime resident Rory Murphy, it is his seventieth birthday on that date, on the twenty-ninth, and if you'd like to shake his hand and wish him happy birthday, we're going to try to have Rory present at Bailey's Garage at the corner of Washington Street and, and Orange Street. We're telling him we're only going to have a few friends and a little bit of cake, but we're hoping there's a lot of people there who can shake his hand and say happy birthday to Rory between four and five o'clock on Memorial Day. So please enjoy your Memorial Day, and please attend the ceremonies in honor of our veterans. This time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Mr. Robert Kelly for Article Twelve.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to grant a non-exclusive sixty-foot-wide access and utility easement along the westerly side of the town's senior center property located at four forty-one Summer Street, assessors map seventeen, Lot Twenty-One, to Abington Investments LLC for the sole purpose of providing vehicular access and utility connections to serve certain age-restricted senior housing residences to be constructed on abutting land owned by Abington Investments LLC and shown as assessors map eighteen, Lot Six, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant an approximately sixty-foot-wide, non-exclusive, permanent-access utility easement along the westerly side of the town's senior center property located at four forty-one Summer Street and shown on assessors map as Lot, assessors map seventeen, as Lot Twenty-One. Said easement to be, easement to be for the benefit of the senior housing residents to be constructed on the abutting property shown on assessors map eighteen, as Lot Six. On such terms and conditions and for such consideration, which may be nominal, which may be nominal consideration, as the Board of Selectmen deem appropriate. This particular article, if you look in your printed, says that the Finance Committee provided no recommendation. We were waiting for final wording on this, and before this meeting, we did provide our recommendation to approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Before we begin a general discussion, to me, there's a lot of legal jargon in that motion. I'd like to call Town Council Greg Corbo up to explain in layman's terms what we're trying to do here. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to just explain what the difference is between the motion that you heard read and the article that's printed in your warrant. The article in the warrant is a petitioned article, which means that once it's submitted to the Selectmen with the appropriate number of signatures, it must appear on the warrant in exactly the form it was received. However, once it's in front of the meeting, it's subject to motion practice, just like any other article. So the article that was, the motion that was presented under this article differs slightly in that instead of voting to grant an easement to a particular party, you're being asked to vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate the granting of an easement. So the difference is, is that you're not actually voting to convey any town property at this time. All that you're doing is authorizing the Board of Selectmen to negotiate on your behalf. And as long as the Board of Selectmen can come to terms that are acceptable to the board and in the best interest of the town, then they can go ahead and grant that interest. If the Board of Selectmen cannot reach such an agreement, then the easement will not be granted. So again, what you're voting on here tonight is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate on your behalf.
Thank you, Greg. Do we have any questions on Article Twelve? Please come forward and take the mic and identify yourself.
Ventresken, nine oh five Plymouth Street. When you say sixty-foot-wide access and utility easement, how deep does that go in? How many acres in?
The, the easement is on the side of the, the senior center property, and it's sixty feet in from the edge of the property. When you drive into the property, I believe.
So it's actually the land that belongs to the senior center?
It is, yes.
Oh, it's nobody's, else's land?
No, it's town-owned land.
Oh, it is town-owned land?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure about that. And one other question. Elderly housing for on assessors map eighteen, Lot Six, Abington Investments LLC, is that housing being built right next to the train line? Because that's where the train line runs through.
It's in back of the senior center. And the Abington Investment LLC is not in the motion any longer? You're reading the article as printed. The motion takes out the name, so there's no specific person, but.
Yeah, and when did you do that? Just tonight, you take out the name?
Yes. That's what, that's why I asked Town Council to come up and explain that.
Okay. But that is all along the train line, with the train comes through.
Yes, it's behind, it's behind the senior center.
Yes, it's the property behind the senior center. When you pull in the driveway to the senior center, it's straight back.
You realize it's very, very noisy at that area?
Well, that's not to be debated here. We're going to debate, well, now we want to give them an easement.
No, the housing, that's all, I mean.
Yes, but that, that comes down the road, ma'am. When we go to Planning Board and everything else. Are there any other questions on Article Twelve?
I'm sorry, Jennifer DeSutter, seven-two-nine Washington. I'm sorry, can we just follow up on her question? Because I'm, it's confusing. She's asking whether or not it is an appropriate place for elder housing. Is that going to be discussed at the Selectmen level? And that's what we're conveying? Or we are conveying that we're approving that there's senior housing going there, and that it's up to the Selectmen to negotiate?
It's, it's definitely confusing. We'll definitely let the.
I'm sorry, what?
We'll let the Town Administrator answer that question.
Town Council.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. So we're, we're not here to debate whether or not there'll be elderly housing on that back lot. What you're here tonight to debate is whether the town should authorize the Selectmen to grant access across town property to get to that rear lot if elderly housing were to be built. Okay, that's something that's, that's in private hands. They'll have to go through permitting, you know, whatever permitting needs to be done to approve that project. But all the town meeting is voting on is if that project is built, should the Selectmen give them access over the town's land so that they can get to their land?
So just from a point of understanding and protocol, do the, are those meetings then public?
Yes, those are all public meetings.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on Article Twelve? Seeing none, Mr. Keel? Please take the mic.
Lawrence Keel, eighty's Battery Street. A member of the Council on Aging, and the, this proposal came before the Council on Aging, it's a point of, point of information to people. They came, they had some questions to ask if the Council on Aging would support this. The Council had some questions. They brought back some drawings and what was intended. When we looked at the fact of that, as was mentioned in the new article, there are benefits that can be negotiated for the town down the road if this whole project was to go through, was explained for us. So as has been stated here, and just to add to it, this is like the first step in hundreds of steps before this project gets completed. Okay? And the Council felt that it was in the best interest of seniors in this town, saying that we have a limited amount of senior housing in the town, that we take a chance, not a chance, but just, this is an opportunity here, and we take a look at this opportunity rather than just dismissing it out of hand. They're, like I say, this is just step one in hundreds of steps that have to be taken before this thing would come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keel. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to take a motion. There's another. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry. If this article is not worded properly and you're making verbal changes in it, could you not correct it and then bring it up at the next meeting?
It's in the.
So that it is worded appropriately? I mean, if there is no longer any Abington Investment LLC, or, I mean, things have changed.
Well, in the official minutes of the meeting, it won't, it won't have that in there. And you should have received, did you grab a handout? This should be the actual motion on a handout.
I, I don't know. I don't usually do this. I'm unfamiliar with it.
Right, well, there's a, there's a handout that prints.
All the information's not in there. You ought to fix it. That's all. I don't know. I don't even know more about it, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on Article Twelve? Seeing none, I'm going to take a, a vote on the motion. The mo, the vote will be a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion made by the Finance Committee on Article Twelve, please so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We'll move on to Article Thirteen. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey a permanent utility easement on a portion of the town-owned property in Rockland, which property is identified on assessors map forty-nine as possible two, in which contains, in which portion contains 7,000 square feet, more or less, to the Massachusetts Electric Company slash National Grid on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deem appropriate, and further to transfer the custody of said portion of the Board of, to the Board of Selectmen for the purposes for which it is held and for the purpose of conveyance of such easement or to take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant. This is unfortunately not part of the surplus property. It is a piece of property that the town owns in Rockland, not in Abington, that needs utility access, and it's just a question of easement to grant access to it.
This is actually part of the Griffin's Dairy property the town bought years ago, and it extended into Rockland. And as you may or may not know, there are high-tension wires that go through the back part of the property into Rockland, and this easement is needed by National Grid, apparently, to clarify some sort of issue out in the Rockland area. But since we own it, this town meeting needs to vote for it. Is that fair, Mr. Town Manager? Are there any questions on Article Thirteen? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Thirteen as motioned by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article Fourteen, the see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by inserting a new chapter entitled the Stretch Energy Code for the Purpose of Regulating the Design and Construction of Buildings for the Effective Use of Energy, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And you can see it's written out in your warrant article. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Fourteen as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Town Council, do we need to add language such as with the chapter number and sections to be determined by the town clerk? As right now, it's printed on the warrant, it's just blank. Would that be appropriate, or? If we make a motion to approve the article as printed in the warrant, we're approving an article with a blank, it says chapter blank. So I didn't know if the motion should add on with the chapter number and sections to be determined by the town clerk. She'll figure out what section fits into our bylaws. Would that be, would that be appropriate? So the.
With the chapter number to be determined by the town clerk.
So moved?
So moved.
So moved. Is there anything to be heard on that motion? Ms. Mays?
Just for those who, who don't know what this article means to some of us, others in the town, this article is a key point in the ability for your Green Committee sage to move forward with applying for green community status. And if you thought the money was impressive for the Community Preservation Act, it's just as impressive with getting green community status. So I encourage everyone to wholeheartedly vote for this, in favor of this article.
Thank you, Terry Mays. Could I get your address, Terry?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Terry Mays, ten-twenty Hancock Street.
Ten-twenty, thank you. Moderator like to recognize Town Manager Rick LaFond regarding Article Fourteen.
I'll just add a couple other things to what Terry said. Currently, there's approximately 190 of the 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth are green communities and obviously have already adopted the stretch code, which is not much of a stretch anymore. And last year, I am instructed that most of the homes in Abington were already built to what is currently the stretch code. And Waymouth, Brockton, Rockland, and Whitman are abutting communities are already green communities. So the stretch code is not so much of a stretch anymore. So whether or not it's necessary, I don't know. I don't know that it matters, but we do have a guest here from the Department, Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, who can be of assistance in answering any questions regard to the stretch code and the Green Energy, I mean, Green Communities Act. But I don't want to take up this meeting's time if you don't believe it's necessary, but I'll let the meeting be our guide.
Is there anything to be heard, or any questions on Article Fourteen regarding approval of the stretch code? If not, we'll take a motion, we'll take a vote on the motion as proposed by the Finance Committee. All those in favor of approving Article Fourteen as moved by the Finance Committee with that additional language regarding the town clerks assigning the chapter number, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1 million to replace water mains, and as funding therefore to authorize the town treasurer along with approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow $1 million, et cetera, et cetera, as printed in the, in the warrant for Article Fifteen. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve the $1 million bond authorization for water main replacement and to approve Article Fifteen as printed in the warrant. This is something that was intended to be part of the vote last year for water main replacement. The, the monetary amount was, was changed last year from three million to two million, and this is putting that extra billion back in. This will not impact your water rates, and it will replace water mains that desperately need replacing.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. And I should also note, in terms of this motion, just for clarity, there's a section that says, "And further, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any such bond or notes, lest the amount of any premium applied to the cost of issuance of such bond or notes, may be applied to the project costs approved under this article, thereby reducing the amount to be borrowed under this article by like amount," which is under a new state law. Is there something to be heard? A question? Anyone? Otherwise, if nothing to be heard, all those in favor of approving Article Fifteen, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to supplement each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to provide that, in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General, General Laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, lest any such premiums applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bond or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium as applies or to take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Sixteen as printed in the warrant. This is a banking bookkeeping article, which basically allows us for any of the loans that we currently have on the books, not, not future loans, just the ones currently on the books, to pay towards the premium without coming to town meeting for approval so that we can pay them off faster if we have the ability to do so.
So more efficient use of our dollars to pay down our debts quicker. Is there anything to be heard on Article Sixteen? If not, all those in favor. If not, all those in favor of approving Article 16, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. See if the, Article 17, I'm sorry, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 102, Article 1, "Failure to Pay Taxes," is the title, by inserting the underline text and deleting the strike-through text in Section 102-1 as follows or take any other action relative thereto. And what follows is the text, which shows the underline language to be inserted, but it doesn't show the article, the language to be deleted, because of word processing, when it was published, it automatically deleted the text to be deleted. It showed it crossed out. So there'll be a motion to address that by Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 102, Article 1, as shown in the warrant, and also by deleting the words, quote, "for not less than a 12-month period," end quote.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 17. So essentially, the words "and may periodically" are being inserted to take the place of the words "for not less than a 12-month period." So essentially, it's just changing that phrase. So right now, so the words "for not less than a 12-month period" will be crossed out, and instead, the phrase will be changed to "and may periodically." That's the only change being made to this article. Is there anything, or any questions to be made on Article 17 as motioned by the Finance Committee? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 17 as moved by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. Articles 18 and 21 have to do with zoning articles. I'm going to just step down until there's no conflict of interest issues or claims. And regretfully, Mr. Kelly will take the microphone.
Article, Article 18, I'm not going to read. It's too lengthy in the interest of time. So, Mr. Sala, do you have a recommendation on Article 18?
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board.
The Chairman of the Planning Board, Mr. Wayne Smith, please state your address. I forgot it.
Wayne Smith, Chairman of the Planning Board, 120 Summit Road, Abington, Mass. Article 18 has to do with buildings in the town of Abington. Presently, we really have no regulations when someone comes before the Planning Board, for instance, and wants to build a building, on what the building actually is going to look like. And this specifies what has to be done. The, it seems quite lengthy, and the reason for that is because once you change one, once you put a new definition in, it has to go to all the other areas in the article, or in the bylaws. And with that, are there any questions to the moderator?
Mr. Smith, do you make a motion?
Yes. The Planning Board moves to approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
This article and the next three, we need a two-thirds majority vote. If I doubt that there's a two-thirds vote, we will have to have a standing count. So are there any questions on Article 18? Mr. Smith, there's a blank in that article. You're going to, and...
That's, that's, it doesn't, there's no words there. It's empty.
It's empty?
Yes.
Just amend Section C2?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification. Ma'am?
Jennifer DeSutter, 729 Washington. Where were these, where was this language co-opted from? Where was this discovered? Was this vetted within your council or your committee, excuse me, sir? Or was it? I'm just curious, this is extremely specific in its decision to look at Colonials, Victorians, and that sort of thing. Is that looking to inhibit new versions of architecture and language? Is there an overview or historical document that's guiding these principles?
Mr. Smith?
Actually, what it is, is to tell the developer or the builder that we need to see the plans of what is going to exist on that property, what it's going to look like. So we want to keep it in the natural character of the town. We don't want to see a cement block building, for instance, built, or something that's inappropriate for the area.
And I guess that's my question, is what's defining the inappropriate? These seem very specific to a very specific aesthetic.
It would be for the, for the authority that's reviewing the plan.
But these guidelines don't actually speak to things that are actually architectural. They're actually only speaking to vague guidelines that would be...
They're architectural. You're looking at what the building is going to look like. You'll be able to review the looks of the building.
With familiarity with the Boston, and forgive me, I know that's probably not a fabulous way to go, but with familiarity with the historical process and buildings in Boston...
That would be a separate...
They can be extremely expensive to have to adhere to the versions of a singular authority on what Colonial or Victorian or those kinds of things. Those mandates not being vetted more properly than a list of relatively generic New England concepts. I'm curious what's, what kind of backup that you have for this. Abington doesn't strike me as having had a particularly specific aesthetic for the last 100 years.
Exactly so. Presently, we have no restrictions at all. And this is now putting this in. It is not typically, if you read the whole article, you'll see that we are not saying that if there are wooden windows, they have to remain, as an historical society, sorry to group, such as in some other towns, you cannot even put modern windows in. But that is, does not say that in this.
Well, let's, let's look at windows, just for purposes of understanding. Are you going to require X number of lights based on its being a Colonial window? Are you going to require...
No, no.
So you can do an open window with no cross pieces?
That's correct.
That's correct. Ma'am, I think the beginning of the article, it says, "The general use of architectural details and designs will conform." General use.
But if it's not giving guidelines, then how is it being helpful?
We're talking generally. General use is not specific uses relative to the windows that you're bringing up. Generally, is the way this reads. The first sentence.
It, respectfully, it's very specific, though. But it is very specific in the outline of the kinds of architecture it's trying to protect. Is it not?
It's a general use of those things, not specifically discussing windows, doors, ornaments. It's general.
So then, if it's not going to give specific guidelines to the committee, then what is its purpose?
Mr. Smith?
As it says, on the first paragraph, "The general use of architectural details and designs which conform to the traditional building styles of New England, including but not limited to Colonial, Cape, Georgian, so forth, and used in traditional exterior surfaces and accents or facades facing the street or nearby public property."
So it's requiring cedar and things of that sort, but it's not stipulating to that?
It's not stipulating specifically something. It's pretty broad, but it does give the granting authority a chance to say, "We do not approve that kind of a building here," like a cement block building.
And if you, I'll grant you cement block buildings, but if your committee then denies it, what's the opportunity for the person wishing to build something that isn't inconforming?
Well, they certainly, they can certainly go to court. There's no question about that. But certainly, right now, as we have it now, there is no regulation. Is that what you like, no regulation?
No, I just think that if you're going to have one, it seems like it either needs to have a vetting process and have, have more to it, more teeth and more specifics, because the way it reads now, it feels like an unvetted, rather vague conveyance of authority without actually speaking to the authority that you're going to have. It seems oddly badly written, to be honest with you. So I'll step down.
Yes, ma'am? Please identify yourself.
Chris Demanna, 641 Summer Street. My question is specific to the mention of photovoltaics and purposely, or having them purposely put not on the street side. There are a lot of homes that are not orient, I'm an architect, by the way. There are a lot of homes that are not actually oriented in the correct direction, in which solar is not optimal to be put on the backside of the homes. And so my question is, is this going to prevent homeowners from actually being able to install solar panels on the street side?
Mr. Smith?
No, it will not. They still can. And somewhere in, I can't find the exact place, but it does talk about that in the article, the solar panels.
Mr. Collins?
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. I'm a member of the Planning Board and involved in the creation of this poorly-worded article. Just some background as to why this came about is, on the Planning Board, first of all, this does not apply to single-family homes. If you want to tear down your home and rebuild a home, you can build a glass square, and this does not apply. What this applies to are subdivisions, commercial developments, developments basically that the Planning Board and Zoning Board oversee. It does not apply to the building of a single-family home on a single lot. That said, as the Planning Board, when we're doing site plan review, we can ask where the sewer lines are, we can ask where the electrical lines are, we can ask where your plantings are going to be, we can ask where your driveway is going to be, we can ask all these questions. We cannot ask, what is your building going to look like? And in some instances, we want to be able to say, hey, what is your building going to look like? We also did not want to have something that was as strict as you see in downtown Hingham or downtown Cohasset, where you can't paint your house anything but white and with black shutters. We wanted to avoid that. But what we wanted to do was to be able to take a look at a development and say, this does not look very good. Can you make it look better? Personally speaking, one issue that I've had lately on the board is proposals coming before the board that frankly, the developer just didn't try very hard to make, look very nice. And, you know, this gives us a little bit of teeth to be able to say, this is a nice community. We would like to keep the general flair of what we have. This does also, does not preclude, however, if Border Cafe wants to come down and open a restaurant on Route 18, they can build their Mexican adobe-style restaurant. This does not preclude it. But it just means that, as applied to the Planning Board, we can at least say, hey, what is your building going to look, look like? And then keep that as part of our general discussion on the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Shea?
Joseph Shea, Street Wyman Road, Abington. I've been involved in town government for many years, and I've heard over those years, especially last 10 or so, people saying that the look of the town is changing. That's always been happening, but there's more complaints now, and there's more things about the buildings don't look good. I think this article is an attempt by the Planning Board to try, as Rick Collins said, to try and have the builders put up something that is going to look good, and at least have an idea of what they're opposing to look like before, before it is approved. You know, it doesn't affect single-family homes, and I'm sure, I am positive the Planning Board will, as they've always been, be flexible on this type of, these type of issues. It's not a very rigid, very detailed proposal, but I think that's good. Do we start out with something that is general, and it's basically a statement of objectives, and work from that, and then see where we go? I, I, you back to this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Any other questions on Article 18? If, if not, we're going to take a motion, we're going to take a vote on the motion of the Planning Board. All those in favor of approving the motion as written by the Planning, as presented by the Planning Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have a two-thirds vote. Article, Article 19, I'm not going to read. I'm going to defer to the Finance Committee. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board.
Mr. Smith, do you have a recommendation?
The recommendation is to approve Article...
19.
19, as written in the warrant.
Are there any questions on Article 19? Seeing no questions, I will now take a vote on the Planning Board's motion to approve Article 19. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have a two-thirds vote. Mr. Sala, do you have a recommendation on Article 20?
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning-Zoning Board.
Mr. Smith?
The Planning Board moves that Article 20 be approved as, as written in the warrant.
Are there any questions on Article 20? Seeing none, we'll now take a vote on the motion of the Planning Board. All those in favor of the motion by the Planning Board on Article 20, please so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote. Article 21, Mr. Sala, do you have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board again.
Mr. Smith?
The Planning Board recommends approval of the, of the Article 21.
Are there any questions on Article 21? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on the, on the motion of the, ma'am?
Can you just explain what it means? And?
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Presently, this came to us by the zoning enforcement officer. The Zoning Board of Appeals, on many occasions, have had people come in and want to have a tattoo parlor in a highway commercial area, and in all cases, they've allowed it. And rather than have it as a no, so that they have to vote, have to make that recommendation with a no, it's more difficult than an SP, Special Permit, so they'd like to have it changed. The Zoning Board would, too.
Okay, ma'am? All right. Any other questions on Article 21? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on Article 21, on the motion by the Planning Board. All those in favor, please so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The vote's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Before I proceed to the final article, I was asked to let you know and remind you that the Aberdeen Celebrates Committee is seeking additions to their hometown cookbook. Mr. Buckley, Mr. Keough, you can submit anything you'd like. You can call, talk to Michelle Christian. There is information on Facebook and at the Town Hall. There's already been 200 recipes. It'll be a great cookbook. And also, if you didn't already see, in the back, there is the handout of the upcoming summer concerts for 2017. The first one will be on Sunday, June 25th. Sundays at 6:00 at the Nisby Bandstand, and every Sunday thereafter. It's going to be a great year once again. If you have questions, they will be eventually posted on the town website in the very near future, and it's a great thing to attend if you haven't done so yet. Music changes every week. Is there anything else to be said before we move to the last and final article? I would like to remind people, as you leave, if you have not yet signed the birthday card for Rory Murphy, who I mentioned earlier, there is a giant birthday card at the back wall that's been posted up at the Town Hall for a number of weeks. If you'd like to sign the birthday card, that will be presented to Rory on Memorial Day, his 70th birthday. So we'll move to the last and final article on the annual town meeting warrant here at our last town meeting at Abington High School Gymnasium, to see what amount the town will vote to raise and appropriate, or transfer from available funds to fund recently settled collective bargaining agreements, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to pass over this article, as there are no new collective bargaining agreements to fund.
Finance Committee makes a motion to pass over this article, because essentially, it's not needed. There are no agreements to fund at this time. Is there anything to be heard? Any questions? If not, for your final vote here at Abington High School, all those in favor of passing over Article 22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. The time being, 8:51, I call this final annual town meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you very much for attending your annual town meeting.